Tuesday, July 2nd, 2013 at 7:00 PM. I will ask for confirmation of the appropriate meeting notice.
The agenda was posted at the Shaw Municipal Building, Ace Hardware, Piggly Wiggly, and the amended agenda was sent directly to the media yesterday as well as council.
Thank you. At this time, I welcome citizens and address any questions or concerns not on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on to item three, the consent agenda. That's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That's a number four, discussion and possible action approving bids for Dickoff Drive curb gutter and street improvements. Any questions? Do we have a motion?
I want to approve the bid for Frank Brothers.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, discussion and possible action regarding post issuance compliance policy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This policy comes at the recommendation of our bond attorney. It's associated with our borrowing. Has to do with the tax exempt nature of the bonds as well as demonstrating our compliance with respect to payment. Our city treasurer worked with our folks from Ellers, who was our bond attorney, and we are requesting that the council would approve the policy as presented.
Do we have a motion?
I make that motion to approve the bond issuance. Compliance policy.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion and possible action authorizing staff to enter into a lease agreement with Gordon Flesch for office equipment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kirk Ebert and I met with staff from the Gordon Flesch Company. The purpose for our meeting was we were having some challenges with our existing fax machine. That's obviously a piece of equipment that is slowly going by the wayside, given the advances in technology that exist. We are at a point in the lease, we lease all of our copy machines, and then we pay for that lease annually. So both the Public Works Department, Police Department, and the City Hall General Government Operations have a lease with them for all of the machines that we have. We are able to get rid of our old fax machine that's continuing to fail us, get an upgraded machine, and then have the lease payment actually be less. So we're recommending that the lease be amended and a new lease, a 60-month lease with Gordon Flesch be authorized. It does stay within our budgetary parameters for 2013 and actually be a minor savings of about $17 a month. So we are requesting that the council authorize the execution of the lease with Gordon Flesch as presented.
Authorize staff to enter into 60-month lease with Gordon Flesch.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion and action, and possible action regarding authorization to draft an ordinance that prohibits licensed operators from being intoxicated while serving.
This came up as a result of an incident very recently at a bar merchant row where we received a call from a patron about bartender being passed out on duty in the bar. We responded, woke her up, and proceeded to get a bunch of guff from her and also told us that we basically can't tell her she can't drink on duty. And because of her activities, she was arrested for disorderly conduct and then resisting arrest. And in doing some research after arresting her, we found out that state law does not prohibit a bartender from being drunk on duty. And we also do not have an ordinance that prohibits that. However, state law does prohibit bartenders from serving people that are already intoxicated. So it really seemed like this one was a no-brainer in us coming forward and asking the council to authorize us to adopt an ordinance or enact an ordinance that prohibits bartenders from being drunk on duty. Because if they're drunk, how do they determine if others that they're serving aren't already drunk themselves? It just, it just seems like, I don't know why there isn't a state law prohibiting this, but I think on a local level.
Wisconsin.
I wasn't gonna say it.
And then also, her capability is annoying, whether there's a minor or not that she's serving, you know? And I think that if possible, we can do something that they lose their license. It's just not fair to citizens that are out on the street to have that. We turned down a young lad for drunk driving, so what's the difference with her serving? To me, that's more of an offense than, you know...
It was offensive to us too, because we really didn't have anything we could do to her activities inside that bar, other than when she started being disorderly. But before that, she's drunk and very drunk. In fact, I had no idea how she could have made any decisions when she was asleep and passed out at the bar. But I would assume that's the exception rather than the norm in the city of Milton. I've been in a few bars and I really haven't seen this type of behavior before, so I was pretty darn shocked. So if not indictment of that establishment or how they run it, I doubt any owner wants their bartenders to be plastered and try to serve alcohol to people.
I just have a...
It should be on there too, on our license, that if you are, not that you're going to go to bars and check every bartender to see if they're drinking or not, but that if you're called like this again, I think it should be on their license that they lose the license. You know, they're drunk. They should lose their license for the rest of the year.
I have no problem with that, but I think that's a legal decision.
I was gonna ask Mark if there's...
Yeah, we have quite a lengthy process to go through, I believe, to revoke an operator license from someone that was approved.
My question, revocation, yes, but what I was gonna ask was, do we have, if we enact an ordinance like this on one violation, do we have the authority under that ordinance to suspend a server's license?
I'm not familiar with that procedure, although many communities do have that, where they actually have demerit points that are issued. Your license comes with so many points, and then if you have point violations, you can suspend based on the seriousness of the offense. And then if you, if you get to a certain point threshold, you can actually revoke. So, and that normally comes at the recommendation of the police chief to a personnel and finance committee, and then ultimately to the council. I will review our alcohol ordinances, because the other issue that's on the agenda tonight is causing us to do so as well. And if the personnel and finance committee would like us to either present what we currently have, as well as make recommendations, we could do that as well.
Is the action considered strictly the personal problem of the bartender? Or does it fall on the owner of the establishment for employing an inebriated person?
This proposal would just be us issuing an ordinance violation or a ticket to the bartender.
I find it, you know, that it's so closely tied together, I was looking for your opinion. If you're going to employ somebody that's drunk in the capacity to put somebody on the road drunk, really?
Yeah, it's kind of difficult when they're not there to moderate their behavior, so I hadn't considered that part of it.
I think though, if we do enact or draft an ordinance like this, there ought to be a penalty suspension based on the severity. Like, you got somebody that's passed out and then drunk or disorderly conduct resisting arrest would be a severe suspension. I think that there ought to be a penalty there, not just pay a hundred dollars and walk back to the bar again. It might just make a lot of sense.
In this case, couldn't we put something into the license instead of, you know, like you said, it's hard to revoke, but if we have a disclaimer on the...
The wording on the license is recommended from the state. It's kind of some sample wording that they, that they want. Not change it, but maybe in addition to, that's something we could certainly look into. I'm not sure what perimeter we can do that, but...
Could the municipalities have their own law?
The municipality has limited ability in reference to enforcing laws dealing with licensing of establishments to sell alcohol and individuals to sell alcohol under chapter 125. So the only authority the municipalities have is that which is delegated under chapter 125. And, and, and in, many municipalities basically adopt chapter 125 and just go under that in general. Municipalities have authority to adopt their own ordinances that aren't in the statutes, but they need to make sure that they're not inconsistent with the state statutes. So some things the municipality can adopt and some they can't. And so that's one of the, in terms of possible penalties that's being suggested here, that's one thing we'll need to look at in terms of whether or not the statutes would permit a suspension, basically without a hearing, I think, is what indicated that, that if there's a violation that's proven in court, one way or the other, that there'd be an automatic suspension for a period of whatever days you put in the ordinance. So that's something that we can look at. As I say, some things you can't change, like some municipalities tried to change what the closing hours were, you can't do that. That's, that's a state, that's a matter of statewide interest, and so you can't change that. But other things that aren't directly addressed in the, in this, in check 125, you can. So I haven't looked at this yet for Dan. I know that he's found that four municipalities have similar ordinances, so my suspicion is that it's permitted. It's just the extent to which you can regulate that need to be checked.
Do we certainly think that the owner would say, "No drinking while on duty"? Because in a case like this, you know, his business is, is being, you know, he could have had a violation, maybe she served an underage child or another inebriate. Yeah, and then what happened, who closed up the place? And that, you know, he has to, the person has to go up to the business? And I don't know, I just can't understand.
Yeah, like I told you, the article in the Gazette this morning, another business owner in this community said she doesn't want any regulations on her business. That she has now no problem with their servers drinking on the job, as long as they don't get drunk. Was she there monitoring that every single minute? Probably not. She's just gonna trust them that they won't, they won't drink too much.
Well, how many issues have we had over the past 20 years with us?
I don't know if there's anybody other than Howie in this room that can attest to 20 years.
Well, I mean, is it, I just wanted, you know, to know, what are we really looking at? You know, how serious is the issue? Are we stating that we don't trust our owners of our bars to monitor their employees? Are you saying that an owner can't have a drink if they're gonna serve any liquor? You know, I just have some questions. I had some concerns that this disproportionately affects women, because we have a disproportionate, disproportionate number of women that are bartending in the city of Milton. So I just, I don't want anybody drunk bartending and serving people. But I also want us to be thoughtful and reasonable about it too. So I guess I just don't know enough information about what it is.
This has probably happened before, only that she didn't get all the way passed out. If they're allowed to drink, and who says when they're drunk or not drunk? You know, some people...
That's right, and we're, it doesn't sound like we're gonna say necessarily unless we have a complaint.
If we're protected so that Dan can go in there if he's called, like with this situation where she was passed out, because if she, even if she had passed out and she was off duty, she got in the car, I'd hate to be on the road.
What we're saying here with this ordinance is we don't want anybody that's in any way affected by alcohol making decisions of who gets, who gets sold and who doesn't. It just doesn't make any sense. If you look at the test of driving ability, professional drivers, I've seen this a couple times, professional race drivers, given one shot, and how drastic their abilities drop with one shot. And at two, they're, they've got no business out there. I mean, that's all it takes is a couple drinks and your judgment is shot.
And our proposal is point zero eight, we're just seeing this driving, and some of the ordinances like Madison, you can't drink at all. We're not proposing that. We understand that sometimes a bartender will participate and drink with their customers, but we're just asking that they be sensible about it.
So that's what I wasn't clear about, is if you were saying, if the ordinance was, "You can't drink at all," so the owner of the establishment could not drink at all, or if you're just saying you can't be inebriated and serving.
You can't be behind the bar, being that person on duty and being...
Okay.
Serving others.
Okay.
Whoever is the on-duty person, owner of the...
So it's not a zero drop, no, you know, zero tolerance? It wasn't, it wasn't clear to me what it was going to involve.
Personal opposition.
I think it's leaned in too, yes, your judgment is affected.
You know, I just don't want us to overreact either.
Right, I don't want neither.
The bars that I go to, you know, I don't see, I don't see the bartenders drinking, because I don't think they can be as effective. I mean, but I don't want to prohibit a bartender from drinking if a friend comes in and they want to buy him a drink, as long as they know their limit, you know? Because this hasn't been, this hasn't been a problem. Public schools, I've seen too often, where, okay, something happens and we have to make all these regulations, we overreact to something that probably isn't gonna happen very often. And we spend all this money and all this time and we overreact. You know, this is one incident, and this was a bad incident, but let's not overreact to all the good businesses that are operating in the city of Milton.
We have had this problem before, Don, where bartenders have been, it's pretty obvious to us intoxicated, and probably didn't do a very good job of controlling the behavior in their tavern and directly outside of it. So it's not the first time, but this is by far the first time we've had something this extreme. And it just, I didn't think I'd be doing my job without coming and bringing it here to the council.
I don't, I think we need something. I'm not saying that. I just don't...
I agree with the concept.
I agree with the concept very much. I just don't want us to overreact and hurt the good businesses that we have in, because we have a lot of good ones that are operating.
Oh, yeah.
I guess if we have one particular establishment or a couple, then that, that's something that should be brought to our attention too at some point, if, you know, I wasn't aware that we are having any problems with a particular establishment or...
If I was an owner, I'd be darn mad if my bartender got drunk and passed out.
Yeah.
That person wouldn't be working for me next, because, I know, I know.
I assume that some consequence will happen.
There should be some consequence on their own. I mean, that's why I think that a good business...
Well, there will be eventually from us.
And I think this is something that we need to take care of now, and I don't think we're overreacting at all, because with all the pubs and the liquor stores we got in this town, we've got to have some control.
But this only covers taverns, it doesn't cover liquor stores or Piggly Wiggly.
No, but...
Not that there's an issue, I just want clarification.
Or Janesville school teachers riding on buses.
Right.
Wow. Limited in scope.
It's none of that. And I think to, you know, to summarize some of the commentary, that code of ordinances that you folks so often adopt and amend reflects community expectations. And so if you have a community expectations that you, the servers that you license not be intoxicated while they're serving, then I think the chief's recommendation is a good one. And I would encourage you to adopt it.
And I'm understanding that the level that determines intoxication is the same as the statewide driving.
Correct.
Which we seem to still...
I think, I think the recommendation is very reasonable.
Mark came up with a good point too. It would cover people at Piggly Wiggly and/or the liquor store, they're licensed operators. I doubt they would be drunk at the Piggly Wiggly's, being cashier there, but I guess I didn't think about that.
The recommended action then is to authorize staff to draft an ordinance. Good discussion on what that ordinance would look like.
I'll make that motion. A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Discussion and possible action regarding waiving the 30-day application requirement for a beer permit for Schilberg Park for Jim and Shelley Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. and Mrs. Martin had applied for a beer permit for an event that they had scheduled. They were not aware of the 30-day application requirement for beer permits, and are requesting a waiver for that. There is a meeting in the interim, and staff is recommending that they be approved for the beer permit. This is an issue that we're seeing a little bit more and more of, and as much as we try to communicate that on application, a lot of times we see parents having graduation parties or other events that start out as we're gonna have it at our house, but then more people are SVP, and then they want to use one of our parks, and then they want a beer permit. Up to a couple of years ago, we never used to bring beer permits. That was, those are what I would refer to as consumption permits to the council. Staff just approved them. And there was no 30-day application requirement. The 30-day application requirement really came on the heels of people who wanted to sell, and they were bringing in their applications at the very last minute, and there really wasn't enough staff time for people to do the appropriate background checks and investigations. So Michelle and I, and we're gonna bring the chief into the discussion, but have been kind of researching other communities and what they allow and what they don't allow in terms of both where people can sell and then where they can consume. And we'd like to bring that back to the Personnel and Finance Committee and make some adjustments, because we see a lot of these. And there's a part of me that often wonders, with all of the things that we bring before you, is issuing a beer permit something that you want to be looking at at the council level? Or do you want to be looking at other stuff? You know, like the issue versus sale versus consumption.
This is a graduation party, some of those kids are not gonna be 21.
Probably not, no, correct.
Are the parents gonna be responsible for them?
They, when they fill out the permit, the expectation is that, and again, it's not, it's not a license, it's just a, we want to legally be able to drink in a park. And there is an assumption that only people of legal drinking age will be drinking, but we don't have any way to really regulate that, yeah. Right.
Well, I, I think some of it's the communication. I mean, when they sign up for the park, are they told that there's a, they are told, so they were told?
No, they weren't. I spoke to them personally, and I'm the one that told them that they needed to get one, and they weren't told. And I'm assuming that they're both honest people, because they signed up at the high school, and it wasn't Bonnie that gave them, so...
If it wasn't Bonnie, then I can see how it would happen, but...
She's retired, isn't she?
Bonnie, as it was this week, yes. Bonnie Murphy, who is the activities assistant up there who takes care of the rentals for Schilberg Park until recently, she just retired, she has told me up and down that she tells these people, but if it wasn't her that assisted them, you know, she was out, then I can see how it could be overlooked, which it happens, I'm sure, more often than not. It's a very busy park, but she's...
They give a form, Michelle, that says you have seven days to apply for it.
Our city permit application may not have been updated to reflect the 30 days. But that's ours.
What they showed to me said you have seven days to apply.
Okay, that's ours, that probably wasn't updated from the 30 days. And the Schilberg Park, it just asks if they're going to, and I don't think it's their responsibility to say that they have to contact the city within 30 days.
I like what you said, though. I think if they're not selling it for profit, you know, that's a decision that should be made at the staff level.
Want to see revisions back at Personnel and Finance?
Yes.
Because the challenge is also it's disjointed when people go to rent Schilberg Park versus rent a city park, and then what they're being told and what they're not being told. Are the forms consistent? We have a law that says you can't drink in any parks unless you come and pay us $10 and get a piece of paper, and then you can. I'm not really too sure why we do it that way.
Because you make money, do you?
So I want to have a discussion with the Personnel and Finance Committee and then the City Council in July to say, let's maybe revamp the whole way we do that, because I think it deserves a pretty good look. Because we get a lot of these, and we want to encourage people to use our parks responsibly. And I think that we can make some tweaks to what we're currently doing to make that better and easier for people to do.
I'll move to approve this permit.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, discussion and possible action regarding mid-year update on 2013 common council-approved goals and objectives.
Thank you, Mayor. As the calendar flipped over to July, I realized we're one halfway through the calendar year. You can see a kind of a printed-out update of the things that we talked about in January that we sought to get accomplished. Majority of them in progress, one actually complete. Some of them are not going to, because of timelines, in particular with the capital building project and building the police station, obviously took a different turn when we decided to also include the city hall and the expansion of the library as part of that project. So some of those are going to be started in 2013, but highly unlikely will be completed in 2013, and will likely meld into 2014 goals, I would assume. Other than that, if the council has any questions or concerns or about any of the updates, I'd be happy to answer them and where they're at.
How's it coming to get sound on TV?
I don't know who we're gonna be dealing with, because the technology person right now is Ed Snow. So I don't know if it's going to be him permanently. I think the district has actually posted that position for a technology person. And then, so once we know who we're gonna deal with, then we'll ask them to finish that.
Is he, is he designed, Ed Snow?
No, Ed is the...
As a recreation?
Recreation and technology person, and then he's also taking John Holt's position until they find a permanent replacement. So when he talked with me and said, because John Holt is no longer with the school district, and he said, "I can fill in, but I don't know a lot about that, and I think we need some kind of a new server or something." And so, once we have that person established, then we'll work with them to get that finished.
Did you hear the date that that would be, or are they just sending now, or just advertising now?
Just advertising now.
We probably don't want to do anything in here anyway, would we? Because if we move out to the other...
I don't think it's our equipment.
It's not, it's not our equipment, it's their server. And how that melds into what they put onto Charter. So it's, the issue is on the district's end, and it's cable access channel. We just give them the discs, and they're having a hard time getting it to work right.
Yeah, because they've stopped being triggered, but they have not gotten their sound.
Right.
Well, it's progress.
I admire that.
It's also compatibility between equipment too, because it's, we're not working with the same equipment, and it's... They're on YouTube, they're on our website. I know if you don't have internet, it's not convenient, but there's a way to see them.
We can show them in the park.
And they can always come here and see it live.
Tickets are cheap. Okay.
Action?
All right. Number five, general items. Our next meeting will be July 16th. Mayor and Alder Person reports.
I'll pass.
Staff report, city administrator.
Construction documents were completed by Angus and Young, project for our police station, city hall, municipal court, council building, all outlet, and anticipated to be back the final week in July. So you will actually see those for the August 6th meeting. Splash pad project update that is scheduled to be open sometime in between at the very, very earliest July 15th, more likely the week of July 22nd to July 26th. The concrete curing, they will paint, put the epoxy on, has to dry after that, and then will be open for business. A lot of emails, a lot of people expressing a lot of interest and excitement about that project, so. And 4th of July parade this week, parade entrants are lining up at 11 o'clock at Lamar Park, and we do have a convertible for mayor, and so it'll be...
It's dark, man, it's dark.
And anybody else who wants to walk and/or ride, please let me know, and we will make those arrangements. We had two, I know it.
I decided I'm going to register people for the fund run instead.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'm gonna be doing that for the summer, so I'm not gonna be here.
Alderperson, march.
My kids said I need to stay home this year. Watch it with them.
Right. Well, I will be at the corner of Madison and Crescent, pushing them out onto Madison Avenue. Jesus, his staff is all ready to go, Howie and their staff, have you seen, already have things all lined up, so it's really quite a pretty neat celebration. And it's, it's a pretty big event, it's a pretty meaningful event in our community, so. So many different fun things to do, whether you run, you swim, you bike, you like carnivals and junk food, or bands at the, at the beer tent. It's just a great production, so if you get the chance to go out, I'll just ask everybody to try to go out and enjoy as much of it as you can.
I noticed blankets out already for the.
Yes.
You're on a Monday, they don't last.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Public works. What's going on? PD.
I met with Brian Paul up at Schilberg today and went over the beer. Beer tent thing is huge. I'm a little concerned, let's put it that way, but we'll be up there and we'll be a presence. We're not checking IDs at the door, that's their responsibility. He did say he would have people roaming around in the tent, checking people, and they're using wristbands, so. He has plans in place, we have plans in place, so we're hoping for the best. Apparently Janesville canceled their fireworks.
Labor Day they're having theirs.
Oh, so he said that our Fourth of July is gonna be nuts up there for fireworks. He didn't think the rest of the festival would be affected by it, but definitely Fourth of July.
So when they walk in to the beer tent, they're gonna get a wristband?
Yes.
If they're old enough to drink.
Yes, and only one entrance by the pavilion, there isn't another one. And they do have those big, huge fences in place at the other points past the bathrooms down below, so.
Are the underages getting a wristband?
No, they're not allowed in there.
They're not allowed in at all?
No. Well, they have to have a parent, obviously, but otherwise.
But those people aren't being issued a wristband?
No, no. But then after a certain time, I believe there's nobody, no young people allowed in there.
They do have baseball players under the age of twenty-one.
Yeah. There's no beer allowed in the dugouts or on the baseball fields.
So once, once the softball's over, or the, once the games are over, then that's when nobody would be in there without wristbands. I'm assuming that if they're.
Parents and guardians.
It's, it's not a perfect system, let's put it that way, but they will, it's up to responsibilities of the beer servers too, to also card people that don't look of age, even if they have a wristband.
I'm sure they're gonna make their best effort, because they want to come back and have this work, I mean.
Yes.
All right. Library, nope. Joint fire. City clerk.
We have t-shirts for sale, we're getting into the retail business. We have a permit for that. Fourth of July t-shirts from last year, they were the royal blue and the tan, they're three dollars. And we also have white t-shirts that say Milton in red, those are five dollars, the proceeds going to the splash park. So if you're looking for something to wear that's kind of festive for the holiday, stop up at city hall, we have tables full, all sizes available. Buy a couple, buy a dozen, buy them all.
It's true, there's a lot.
There are a lot, and they're, they're good quality t-shirts, they really are nice.
Maybe the mayor could throw some while he's riding the convertible.
I think we need a t-shirt.
I'd be too busy winging those Tootsie Rolls.
There's no throwing.
Talk candy.
There's no throwing of candy.
That is in dispute.
But you could shoot them out of a gun, right?
I will definitely be throwing candy.
Lightly underhand.
All right. City treasurer.
Excuse me. Okay, consideration of a motion to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute, section nineteen, point eighty-five, paragraph one, per need deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, reference of fire, fire department financial proposal, and lease agreement, and public works department union negotiation contracts.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.